Okay, today is November 28, 2023. I'm in Manila, Philippines, so I just got home. I just landed this morning and... You know, I think the universe is talking to me this morning. I met Eric from Germany.
Hi, Nice to meet you.
Yeah. He just got back from... Oh, he just stayed from...
Indonesia, from Bali.
Uh, Bali. So, um... We went out waiting at the, uh... At the airport. Me arriving and we went to grab a taxi and then it happened that he was waiting to get a grab cab. And so, he asked me, um... What did you ask me?
Yeah, if you have some tips for Manila, where to go, where to stay in the evening and... Um, because after a week, take some time to check in in my hotel and I didn't have a plan, so I asked him what to do and... Yeah, he was so nice. He had me for breakfast with her lovely sister. And it was really nice, best breakfast I ever had in my life. And now we're hanging out for some massaging.
Yeah, so, um... Yeah, what else you wanna say? So you said you're from Germany, right?
Germany, I'm from Germany, in the northern part. And yeah, I do a lot of activities, a lot of sports and I'm really into this kind of stuff. So I'm really interested what you're showing me today. And yeah, I'm looking forward.
Okay, let's do it.
Uh, sir, how about you sign?
Ayoko manato. Go for a massage room. We rented for two hours today at my sister's condominium. So I'm excited.
Yeah, let's do it, I'm excited too.
This way, I'm going to get my sister.
Good. Maybe jump, just turn on the lights.
Okay, so before you start, I'm going to test your flexibility and I'll show you what to do and just follow me. Put your arm up like this. Or right, so close to your ears.
Close to the ears.
Facing.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm looking at... You're not tight, but you have a big torso. Okay, and then relax and then grab your arm in the back. And show them. Yeah, wow, you're good. So you... It's flexible, it's fit side.
There's a problem, I think.
This is... Yeah, so you have about like five inches. Okay, so we're gonna work on this one or both of them. Yeah?
Shoulders.
Shoulders.
That's a problem.
And then touch your toes. And then... Yeah, so you have no problem, your back is okay. And then squat like this. Oh, yeah. Oh, you're good. You look Asian now.
I'm local.
Yeah, like this. And then one. Yeah, open your heels out a little bit.
Heels out.
Yeah, heels out, yeah. And then lie on your back if you can.
Oh, I can do this.
Uh, so you... Yeah. See if you tighten a little bit, it's okay.
Oh, again, group.
Huh?
That's all I can do.
Okay. So now, quad, your hips, your glutes are tight.
Okay.
Yeah, and then your ankles are tight. So basically, the lower back is tight too.
Okay, everything is tight.
Everything, no. So we're gonna work on that. Uh, do you have any concern you wanna focus on?
I'm letting you... Uh, yeah.
Decide, okay?
Yeah, you can decide, you're the expert and...
So lie on your back?
On the back or...
Ah, on your back.
On my back.
On your back, yeah. Ah, you're tall, okay. You're all happy? Okay. And, uh... Do you have any questions?
No.
No?
When I have some, then I will ask. So what are you doing now at the moment?
Um, so I'm just warming you up right now.
Okay.
And feeling, I'm touching your muscles, your bones, ligaments, and feeling them. And at the same times, I'm gonna work on it and see like the tightness and where your energy, if it's plug up like that. So I'm just feeling them.
Why is it important to warm up?
Uh, warm up is the circulation.
Okay.
And then also, if you warm up, you're feeling all the tension, the stress of the muscles. And so I can make a decision on how to proceed with your treatment. So how can I release your tension, tension?
So you're feeling my body now?
Yeah, I'm feeling it and warming you up. Let the circulation flowing. Introduce more oxygen to the tissue or the muscles like that. Warm up, warm up.
Do you already feel some issues, some problems?
Well, we... When the last flexibility test that I've done to you.
Okay. So you know which muscle you wanna work on or which direction? Which?
Yeah, pretty much.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty much, I know where to go.
But you will explain, tell me what kind of muscles you're doing, right?
Yeah.
What is different to a normal massage than your technique?
Well, the Swedish massage is more on, uh, like this. Uh, relaxation like this.
Yeah.
This is what you learn, this is what you know, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's good, but the purpose of it is just to relax your nervous system. You're not getting down deep.
Yeah.
And that's why. Um, it... There is other benefits in doing it. And this one is, um... Like it releases a lot of, uh, the tension from trauma, from accumulations of our stress over time. So... Here, like this, if I do this, you're gonna fall asleep.
Yeah.
But if I do this, how do you feel?
Activated.
The muscles, you get more what?
Yeah. Activated and, uh, stretched.
Yeah.
Moved, mobilized.
Yes.
Yes.
So when I do this, it releases a lot of, uh... The pressure on it and you release the trauma. That buildup over the years.
What kind of trauma could it be?
Um, it depends on how you grow up. Like if you... In your family, if they raise you, uh... You know, it... Individual is... We're all unique, so... It depends on how we raise up. If your family is very violent, they're very emotional, they're very dramatic. Like that. So it's story in our body.
So what kind of muscle are you working on at the moment?
Um, hamstring.
Hamstring.
Yeah, inner hamstring. And your groin, groin right here. You never had this kind of massage?
No, never.
How old are you?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
So the first time to get my problems solved.
When you go back to Germany, you should find a place in your area.
Yes.
A Thai massage.
I have, um... I made one Thai massage and they worked on my back.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really good.
So that's the Thai massage. They work on your back.
So are you working on my back too?
Uh, possible if I have, you know, I can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can.
When I had it, there was a lot of stretching involved.
Yeah.
Hard stretching. So I had muscles on us afterwards, the day after.
The day after, where'd you get it?
In Germany.
In Germany?
Yes.
I told you, I have a lot of, um, like, uh... I met a lot of German that went to Thailand and learned Thai massages.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the Germans, they like Thai massage, they like the pressure.
Yeah. Like deep tissue and...
Yeah, deep tissue.
I think it's better to, when the... The massage actually helps you with something.
Yeah.
As just relaxation.
Relaxation.
So I've been to the gym yesterday.
Yeah, you're sore?
No, it's good, but now everything gets blood flowing and, uh... I think the regeneration will be better.
Yeah.
It's moving.
It's moving.
Do you think we need to do a lot of weight training and muscle training that you get stiff?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you... If you get training like that, then you should get bodywork to lengthen and stretch, uh, the muscle. What else, they get tight.
So who would you recommend this kind of massage?
Anyone.
To do, yeah?
Yeah, anyone, young, old, you know.
So it's actually good for everyone?
Good for everyone.
And how often is it?
Oh, you can do them every day?
Every day?
Yeah, every day. Just like exercise, just like running, walking.
Yeah. Will this help me for my, for my training?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, when you, like, uh... When you're running, sports. My bed is moving.
This place is not made for bodywork.
Yeah.
It's only made for relaxation.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
How often do you get the bodywork massage with yourself?
Most of the time, I get... Uh, I do it myself a lot.
You do it for yourself?
Yeah, but I do, I use the hammer.
A hammer?
Yeah. Home, and then I get massage maybe three, uh, three to four times a week. Cause I, if I want to get it, I'll... I get crunchy.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
What kind of technique is this?
This is lots of Thai massage.
Thai massage?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's also relaxing.
Yes.
And I can relax.
Well, it depends on the therapist. I'm very intense when I do my, my bodywork when they have problems.
Yeah, definitely. How these techniques help in my hip, my leg?
Your hips, your quad.
This exercise at the moment?
Mm-hmm. And now this one, decompressing your spine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Your hips is like here. So if you wanna loosen up this, then I have to go and tap with the hips and then walk on it, walk on it like this.
Oh, yeah.
So you feel it, the pressure?
Feel it, yeah.
Yeah, like this.
And it will help me get a better squat.
Better squat.
Better mobility.
Mm-hmm. Here, your quad.
What's your opinion of, um, blackboard? You know blackboard?
Nah.
The rules for your leg rollers?
Yeah. Um, that one is, you only... It's, you're compressing. So when you, when you wanna, when you, when you... This is compression. Um... When you... When the fascia is tight, when they're dry, the muscle is tight or the fascia is tight, you need to decompress it to make, to open up and get more blood circulations and oxygen. Decompress it. So if you, if you use the foam roller, it compresses.
There's nothing?
Nothing, nothing, anything.
So better get a ball?
Get a ball or something that will expand your muscle.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know, but it's very popular, the foam roller, but when breaking up fascia, you need to decompress the fascia.
Better foam ball?
Um, with spike.
With spike?
Yeah, spike ball like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I recommend.
Big spikes or small?
Yeah, it's small, there are different types of spike balls.
Okay.
You can try them on.
And what do you think about massage pistols, like the massage guns, you know?
Um, also has, uh, it's a vibrational massage.
Okay.
So anything that you, anything that will move the muscle is a form of releasing the fascia. But, um, has another benefit too.
Okay.
Everything is, um, if you know how to use them, then it's beneficial to release the fascia. Cause the goal is to release or to break up the fascia and the muscles and make it fluid, more fluid.
Yeah.
More lighting. They're not sticky. So when it's sticky, you cannot, you cannot bend, like you cannot lie on your back when you bend your knee. Remember the last test?
Yeah.
So it's, this one is very sticky.
Yeah.
The muscle, the quad.
Okay.
So now we're breaking it up through this movement.
We will try afterwards again?
Afterwards, yeah, but you can't get it in one session.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, but it's possible.
What do you think, how many sessions do I need to get to lie on my back?
About five.
Five sessions?
To get, to get. But some I have successful in one, uh, two sessions.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do it now, we'll see what happens.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Can you explain why you don't need, um, lotion or something?
Um, I prefer dry because I can get more to the muscle. Um, when I use oil, it's another technique that I use that I can glide if I wanna glide, if I wanna break up more fascia. But there are all good benefits, but I'm more comfortable doing this. Uh, this one, I can get more work done.
More grip.
More grip, yeah.
Yeah.
More grip. So I prefer this. But all good, any types of massage or bodywork, it's benefit, it's, uh, you get benefits of it.
Yeah. Okay, I feel it's getting more intense.
Yeah. So now you're not gonna relax?
Not anymore.
Yeah.
This is really intense.
Mm-hmm. I can't hold you for the table.
I'm rough.
Yeah.
Does it make a difference, um, how tall someone is?
No.
How flexible they are?
Yeah, I can pretty much do everything, big, medium, small. I can work any, anyone, elderly, frail elderly. It's a different technique when you do, when you work with big people, small people.
Do you need more power for bigger people?
Mm-hmm.
To get into the muscle, right?
Yeah, you have to get in.
Also depending on how much head and make it out of all the muscle, right?
Yeah, and then how much we can take it. Now you do sideways and towards me.
To your...
Lie on your back?
Lie on my back.
Lie on your back, then move towards me. More, more, okay. And turn like this. And then more towards me. And.
Is every bodywork massage the same?
No.
Or e- every time different?
Different, yeah. Different, different one, how I feel and how you, your body react.
Yeah.
Your response.
And depending on which part you're working more?
More.
Okay.
Sometimes instead, intense, sometimes not. Mostly my work is, the purpose of it is to release this tightness. And release the trauma that build up. It necessarily not, not to relax you. But if, if it relaxes you while I'm doing it, then so be it. But the purpose of what I'm doing is just to let it out.
Yeah.
Because we cannot do it on our own.
Definitely.
Or else it will, it will, it will become a plane. Inside we become, there's lots of, uh, uh, we're on fire inside. We, when we are on fire inside, we get headache, insomnia, anxiety, depression, ache and pain, gut issue. Uh, you get mad easily, you get upset easily. Because we don't know how to let it out, our frustrations in life, our sadness, our loneliness.
Oh, pressure is building up.
Yeah, it, so it, it stay, it hang out in our system and our organs and our muscles, ligament, tendons and joints. That's why we have ache and pain everywhere. Because they, they become dormant.
Yeah.
Until they explode, it becomes disease.
Oh, crazy.
Yeah, crazy, right?
Yes, very crazy.
So if you didn't need, if you can, if, if you're only creating this. And there's only you dealing with the surface of it, you're not releasing a lot of tensions in the body.
Yeah.
So you need kind of like intense, because as we get older, our body, we get tight.
Yeah.
So now, to do that, you see, you have to feel it, you have to, uh, touch the muscle and work on it. If you're just only working like this, then what about the bones, what about them, the ligament, tendons, they don't get work on. So you have to work on, on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's very important.
I think the upper body is more intense.
(laugh) Than the lower body?
Yes.
You feel it now?
Yeah.
It's a different approach, right?
Yes, different approach, definitely.
Because you have a big, uh, torso here, the torso.
Yes.
Okay, face up.
What? Right now?
Face up.
Is it exhausting for you?
No.
No?
It's like, like exercise.
Oh, yeah. Every day?
Every day.
Yeah, you look. Yeah, I need to go to the gym anymore.
Yeah, but I go to the gym to survive.
Yeah?
Yeah, get my energy.
So you're not doing both sides, uh, the same, right? A bit different. Because you know that I have some problems on the one side more than the other, right?
So you have to feel it, how the, your, your neck move.
So what did you feel?
Well, s- s- the range of motions or when I move it is a bit, uh, tight. I can't go further. And then you, you have some, uh, some like tightness, tension.
So where was the tension?
On both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have to open it.
Oh, yeah.
And then after like two, three sessions, and then I, you start feeling it, like, oh, okay. My range of motion is, uh, better, and then I think better. I'm not, my mind is not heavy, I don't think that much, you know?
Yeah.
Because when your, your neck is tight, it affects the whole, your brain function.
Yeah, yeah.
You get lonely, sadness, you get, uh, foggy brain. You get, uh, forgetfulness, uh, amnesia, oh, that's the worst one. Uh, you get, you get mad easily. So the circulation, the blood circulation is not getting enough oxygen into your brain. So it's, it's lingering here, so they become tight. So when they're tight, how could the blood flow over to the your brain? So very slow, they're functioning, you can walk out, you can walk, you can, you know, you're, you feel like normal. But you have symptoms, like headache, insomnia, anxiety, migraine, all this stuff. You, 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 you have, you, you get mad easily. So those are the symptoms that will show up until you address them. When you address them, and then your mind become relaxed. Because you're getting more oxygen.
Yeah.
But if you don't address them, it'll give you a, a, a crazy, you know, you, you go crazy, it'll give you a lot of headache. Anxiety, you know, irritability. So, so you have to keep throwing, you have to move them. If you don't move them, you become stagnant, that's when all the, you know, symptoms every day. And then we think it's normal, it's not. And then what we do, we take medication, we take, uh, we see doctors, and then we see psycho- psychotherapy to talk to them.
Yeah.
The only one, the only one your muscle asking is to release it.
Yeah.
Like this. But once we, when, once I help you and help you to release them, you get mad at me because it's painful. It's sore and tender.
You just enjoy it afterwards.
Uh, yeah, you just take it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of people, um, they like to buy a house, an installment. They're, they, they install, their, their suffering is they, they put installment. Why, why don't you just pay it forward, pay it cash, pay, pay it now?
Yeah.
So what I'm doing now, just, your suffering is only ninety minutes or an hour, just pay it now.
Yeah.
Why don't you just pay only ten dollars, two, twenty, twenty dollars?
Because it's.
And thirty years.
In comparison, that's a small pain for the pain I would get when I don't do it, right?
Yeah, you don't do it, you prolong your, your pain.
It's a pain investment.
Yeah. So your, your pain investment should be now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you just eat, right?
Yeah. Don't have water.
It's full.
One, I'm just fat.
No, you're not. You're in good shape. But we just ate a Philippine breakfast in Manila.
Big, big, big breakfast.
In Manila. Your first breakfast in Manila.
Yes.
The Philippines, and your first ma- bodywork massage in the Philippines.
Yes.
And my first time in this year, back home in my country.
And everything in the first hours where I went to Manila.
Yeah, that you get, you get food, you get.
I arrived at five AM, and now it's like eleven AM, and I already had so much experience.
Yeah, sure. So that's what we call the, the, the blessing of the universe.
Blessing of traveling.
Yeah, traveling. Okay, sideways, facing this way, you go.
Like this?
Yeah. You get to explore different, uh, you know, uh, culture.
Yeah.
Food, tradition and all that. Food, tradition and all that stuff.
The food was really good.
Yeah?
Yeah. Many friends told me that the Philippine food is not that great, but you convinced me.
Well, you have to find out yourself.
It's really good.
The one that you had is homemade.
I loved it.
Homemade. So what do you think will be our title for this? German guy, first time in Manila, Philippines. Got...
German guy, uh getting, I don't know, experience the Philippine culture.
Now I was thinking...
Exploring the body of a German.
Exploring a body of a German.
German guy experience the magic of bodywork.
I like what you're thinking. I like your thinking. Uh I'll text you when I posted it.
Yes.
See you, you know, I'll give you some idea.
Yeah.
Okay, face down. How you feel?
Release, already releasing.
Yeah?
Yes.
Hold on.
So far so good. A different experience than the normal massage I had so far.
Different, right? Now I'm gonna walk on you, you said it.
Okay. That's intense, okay.
Heavy, huh?
Yeah.
Am I heavy for you?
No, it's okay, but intense.
Uh tight?
Yes.
Relax, relax, relax. Okay. We're done.
Thank you so much.
Well, can try that one on, like this.
Oh yeah.
Seven, that. Try it.